Nope. Hold on, let me hit got it.
Ask.
Received.
All right, so I am going to call this meeting to order at 7:04 PM.
Hey.
January.
Have to go play somewhere else.
Via Zoom and all members are present now, just to refresh our memories. We are on Zoom, so it's gonna be, I'm gonna list off your names again when we vote. I'm gonna take attendance, all of that good stuff because we are on Zoom. So I am here, Nicole, are you here?
I am here.
George?
Yes.
Tom Lanzner?
Happy to be here.
Bill Sign?
Here.
Tom Telemini?
Here.
And Karen Turley, you are here even though we don't need you for a voting member, but thank you for being here.
Sure.
Sure. Alright, so we are in number four, which is approval of agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to move the Board of Selectman Updates and Referrals up to put it after six.
Underneath public participation?
Yep.
Okay, is there a second to change the agenda?
Second.
Alright, Nicole, do me a favor when you make motions in second, just to say your name because we're on Zoom. So all those in favor, this kills me, but Nicole?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Tom L?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye, yes.
Tom T?
Yes.
Alright, motion clearly passes. Alright, so we are on, so we is, if we move the change, did, how did I, how did we move that? Amy, did I do it with the change all in one to approve the agenda, I hope?
Moving.
Well, you have to do the approval of the agenda as amended.
Yeah.
With their changing, but who was the second, the first was Tom, was the second Nicole?
Yes.
Okay, she's not showing on my screen, only nine of you were showing on my screen.
Oh, well, everybody's showing online.
That's fine, you're good, you don't need to see, it's not a good angle.
I don't think we're all, none of us are on a good angle right now. Alright, so Amy, what do we say, we need to approve agenda with changes?
A motion to approve the agenda as amended, Nicole.
Alright, second?
Bill, I'll second.
Alright, and any discussion? All those in favor, Nicole?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Tom L?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Tom T?
Alright.
Motion clearly passes, so the agenda is approved. Now on to number five, approval of minutes, regular meeting, December 15th, 2021.
This is Bill, I'll move, we approve as presented.
Alright, is there a second?
George, I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor, Nicole?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Tom L?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Tom T?
Yes.
Alright, on to public participation?
Geraldine?
Yeah, I hear you.
Noreen Farmer, 247 Southwater Street. As you approach the upcoming budget season, I want to ask that you think about, I haven't seen the grant lists yet, but we, we're doing a lot of economic development in bringing in the solar panels and bringing in the Silverman Group. I know that particular one is about a $13 million bump and they do get a tax abatement, so it's not all exactly the same, but this 2% thing that we're stuck in, I'm hoping you guys can look at it and, and think about the fact that this economic development can't just be used to spur on tax cuts. We have so many things in this town that we need to start addressing infrastructure-wise on both the school side and the town side. And with the grant lists growing from these things, I think we really need to take a hard look at what can we accomplish with some of this increased tax money, rather than just keep cutting and, or just the whole intent of keeping the taxes as low as possible. So as you start your wonderful season, I hope you'll bear that in mind.
Thank you, Noreen, anybody else for public participation? Alright, so we are going to move on and with the new, with the change in the agenda, we're gonna do Board of Selectman Updates and Referrals, so I will send it over to you, Jason.
So I'm having some technical issues here, so if you could coach me as to which ones you'd like me to talk about when, I'd be more than happy to do that. But I'm afraid the only way I could fix my technical issues would be to exit the meeting, and I think that would end it for everybody.
Yeah, that would be bad.
So if you could just coach me with what you'd like me, but I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, so really only thing that we have under you, under Board of Selectman Updates and Referrals is consideration and possible authorization to accept a bid for Broadbrook Fire Department Fire Truck Replacement and Forward to Town Meeting as approved by your Board of Selectman on 1/13/2022. That is the only thing that we have under you right now.
Amy and I had talked about one other thing that, that I'll cover when she calls on me. So the, the Broadbrook Fire Department has gone out for bid for a new fire truck, it's a pumper truck. The one and only bid that came in was from a company called Seagrave, which I believe is out of Wisconsin. And it was for $1,049,000 and change. The Board of Selectmen had a special meeting a week ago, Thursday, to forward it to you guys and then set the town meeting. I've spoke with each of the voting members already about the, the process that we went through, for the record, I would just say that after consultation with the Chairman of the Board of Finance, we talked about me going ahead and scheduling the town meeting prior to it being sent to the Board of Finance, so that we could maintain that bid price. In the event that the Board tonight move that forward, I'll simply cancel tomorrow's town meeting, but so that we can keep the bid valid within the window with which it would be honored. We wanted to make sure that we were doing the mechanical stuff to, to move the item to a town meeting. So that said, the total price of $1,049,000 doesn't include, or is, is funded by $200,000 worth of capital expenditures that's in the current year's budget. That will be maintained in the out years. So the first payment isn't due until delivery, which is 460 days from the time the contract is signed. So that would actually be $200,000 in this fiscal year in capital for, for BBFD. $200,000 next year in capital for BBFD. And probably the way the calendar falls is 200,000 thereafter, so they would have 600,000 of the slightly more than $1 million cash in hand already by the time the first payment was due. This was something that was anticipated during their initial budget formulation a year ago. It was approved by the voters by almost a two to one margin, so this, we're just now effectuating the purchase of the truck, committing what's, what would effectively be new money to it. Does that answer your question, or is that a good synopsis? I'm happy to answer any questions. I see Chief R. Carey is on too, if any has, anyone has any for the, for the chief?
Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding?
Yeah, this is Bill. I'm just looking in the contract and the payment terms say 95% of the contract price due upon delivery of the truck. So that means in 480 days or whatever it is, we gotta have the full $1.5 million, even though $600,000 approved technically, correct?
1.05.
Yeah, 1.05, yeah, sorry.
Chief R. Carey?
Truck is gonna be an lease purchase. So we're gonna, when the truck is delivered, it's $450,000. And over the next, hopefully seven, five to seven years, depending what the Commission wants to do, we're gonna finance it.
So what says in the contract or payment terms is not what the town's actually doing?
Correct, the town, all, correct, the town's not paying, it's, it's coming out, we're gonna lease it over the next seven years.
Okay.
Delivery date.
Alright, because I said, this, instead of reading the proposal contract here, it was different than what was talking on the phone the other day, so as long as, so it's, so they have, you have to get the contract amended to how you're actually paying for the truck.
Seagrave is gonna get paid 100% when the delivery of the truck to the financing company.
Okay, so the finance company is who you're, alright, I understand it, gotcha.
Anybody else? Questions, concerns? Alright, well, it is up to you guys if someone would like to make a motion to accept the bid for Broadbrook Fire Department Fire Truck Replacement and Forward to Town Meeting.
This is Bill, I'll move, we approve the purchase of a fire truck for the Broadbrook Fire Department and $1,049,658 in Board of Town Meeting.
Alright, is there a second?
Second, Nicole.
Alright, any more discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
I, I think it's, it's fine, I think it makes sense, and the other one is, how old is the other one, by the way? Tom?
The one that's coming off is 1990.
No, the other truck is, the truck's a 2001.
2001, okay.
This is what we've been trying to replace for the last three, four years of the budget before we broke off onto our own. We've had a lot of problems with it.
Okay.
Alright, all those in favor, Nicole?
Oh, okay, yes.
George?
Yes.
Tom Lanzner?
Yes.
Bill Sign?
Yes.
Tom Telemini?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We will go back into order, so we will now do communications. I have nothing, Amy?
I have just one from the auditor that he couldn't join us tonight, he's not ready for the audit. Still have hopes of being done by January 31st.
That was an awful long list in that email from him to be done by January 31st, not gonna lie, I'm a little nervous.
I'm working really hard.
Well, I know you are. I do, I do, I do. I do, I do. That was it, right, A?
That's it.
Alright, on to monthly reports, so Amy, I'm gonna turn it over to you. I'm gonna mute.
Alright, I don't think I have anything prepared. I don't know if anybody has any, the last couple months, we've kind of gone account by account, but I don't know if anybody has any specific questions. Taxes are 72% collected. So that's good. I think we're pretty much in line where we have been in the last couple years. Let me see. The collected percent. Yeah, we're 71.49 on a tax collector report. That wasn't the one I was looking for. And last year at this time, we were 69.67, and the year before, we were 67.9. So just a little bit above, between 2% and 5% above the last two years. Anybody else have any other specific questions or anything they want me to explain?
This is Bill, I looked through and I didn't see anything that stuck out for me, so I'm good.
Anybody else? Alright. So on to Board of Ed, 21, 22 Financial Reports, and I see Patrick's with us. So I guess, you know, we're talking 21, 22, so maybe, maybe we'll go to Board of Ed Updates and Referrals, and Patrick, you and Amy can update us on what you're doing audit-wise. And maybe just update us, is there anything going on this year you want to give us a heads up about?
I mean, as far as this current year budget, we're in good shape. I can tell you that, obviously, I, from my last meeting, I had shared, we were transitioning with our business office, so we do have an interim, she just started in January, so I believe she's on her third week. Her name's Patricia West, she goes by Pat West, she's the retired business, school business manager from Enfields from two years ago, and she's helping us two to three days a week, basically to stay afloat and assisting with our budget presentation for this year.
Any questions from anybody, or?
Are we getting all the numbers, this is Tom. Are we getting all the numbers for the budget and for the auditor, how are we standing with that?
Um, can I ask a huge favor, Tom, when we get to number 10, Board of Ed Updates and Referrals, can you have Amy and him review all that and we can all ask questions? Does that work?
Works for me.
Okay, cool beans.
Yeah, I mean, the only other thing I can say as far as just this year, our business office, at the next Board of Ed meeting, I'll be basically reviewing the plan as far as reorganizing our business office, which will be important as far as putting forward job descriptions to be voted on, so that we can then proceed as far as hiring. Like, for example, we don't have a job description for a school business manager. We don't have a job description for accounts payable. So we need to get those things done, approved, to go forward and reorganize our business office.
So that said, Patrick, do you already have what you have decided to be like? How many positions you're going to bring into the office, or are you still working on that?
So, yes, I can tell you, I'm finalizing and writing to present to the Board of Ed for Wednesday.
Okay.
So I can tell you, it will be in the packet Friday that goes out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Anybody else? Alright, so we'll go on to AC, which is transfers, which I think is just one, but on my phone, hold on one second. Good lord, this is hard to do on my phone.
Oh, yes, there's only one, and this is the one that Jay was gonna talk about. So, we had some presentations and we chose a budget transparency software. And the six-month price is $5,600. And we're looking to transfer from contingency to buy into that software to run this year's 22, 23 budget through. And Jay has a presentation, I think of South Windsor, who uses it already, so it would give you guys an idea of what ours will look like.
Yeah, I guess I really just need more of a description and I have no idea what you're talking about, so I will listen to you guys.
So the, the software that we have identified and have since contracted with is a vendor that was made available through CCM. One of the highlights of the annual CCM conference is they have a pretty extensive trade show. And so whether it's Len and Joe from DPW, or Patty from Tax, or Melissa from Community Services, or Amy from Finance, as you go down the, the different vendors of the trade show, you can see some pretty, pretty cool opportunities to increase either transparency or constituent services. And this vendor that we have gone with does those things. It may, it takes our budget and allows you to, to compare it historically over a period of time in a way that's much more transparent and much more user-friendly than what we currently have. We, we have a scanned PDF of our Munis run. That, that's effectively what our budget is, and that's what the public has access to. This will give you an opportunity to dive deeper into revenues and expenditures and department lines and, and account types, so if you wanted to see across the board what we were paying on the, the town side for professional services, you could do that. If you wanted to see what we were paying for benefits, you could do that. If you wanted to see what we were paying for supplies, you could do that. If you wanted to see how, how much the, the police department has grown over a five-year period of time, you can do that in a much more user-friendly way. The first thing that this does is it allows for a breakdown of what you as the taxpayer are paying towards each of these services. I'm gonna try and run a little demonstration, but again, I am having some computer issues, so if this doesn't work, I'm just gonna abort and I'll talk about it. Where'd it go? Can you guys see that? Yep. Okay, so this is the town of South Windsor. And this, this gives you an opportunity to see the demographic snapshot of how the town stacked against other, other communities in the state. There's a whole bunch more demographics that you can see other than population, median home value, and household income, so I'll skip that, but it's pretty extensive in terms of comparatives. Then it goes into a financial review between revenues and expenses. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna click on View Breakdown. It should prompt me at some point here to put in how much I'm, actually, I'm gonna go to Expenditures instead. This will ask me to show how much I'm paying in property taxes, so if I am doing by department, I wanna fund. There we go. So if I, if I pay $5,000 a year in property taxes, now we're talking, come on, mouse. Oh, you're killing me. And now I can't move anything. There we go. So if I pay $5,000 a year in property taxes, this, this is the overall breakdown of their budget, but as you dig deeper, it shows you that of my $5,000 bill, 3,000 goes to the Board of Education, 414 goes to debt service, 399 goes to public safety, so that, that argument that, that people make about, you know, where their tax money is going, we're gonna show them where every nickel is going. And you can see what the breakdown is if you wanted to look just on the general fund side. You know, this, the largest piece of South Windsor's budget is their debt service, which isn't surprising, since they're buying five, or building five schools. This is the breakdown of their general fund appropriations. Added in, and it's just a sliver of what their Board of Ed is, which is pretty standard for the state. But it's, it's a tool that allows you to provide more clarity to the taxpayers. The other thing that they have here, I think this is the page, yeah, so they have a listing of all of the projects that they have going here. This is a, a couple of different data points, first of all, they're talking about their own capital projects. So you can see all of the different things that they have going on. They have an allocation of, of where their ARPA money is going. And they also have a listing, I'm not sure if it's on this page or not, but it's in this software where they can show where tax abatements have been provided. So it shows not just, you know, where the money is going, but where, where it's coming from, how it's, how it's being spent and provides the voters with more certainty as to, you know, the responsible stewardship of the tax dollar. I'm really impressed with this software, I think it's gonna provide voters much more confidence in terms of, you know, being able to see where their own dollar is going. It's, it's something that we've signed up for, for two years to give it a try. Amy and I have been hustling to try and make sure that it's in place for this budget cycle. We have our, our next meeting, it's an organizational meeting in terms of, of laying out the website. We have our next meeting with them tomorrow. So it's, it's an effort to be more clear to the voters as to what we're doing with our money. Any questions or comments on that?
I'll just comment too, so I did see you present this at another meeting, Jay, so I think the one thing that I do remember, and I'm just thinking from our constituents, a lot of the time their questions come from the Board of Ed side, so just to be clear, the Board of Ed would just be singular, there wouldn't, it wouldn't be a breakdown like we can see with the town appropriations, correct?
So at the moment, that's true. Dr. Tudren has quite enough on his plate right now for me to have tried to throw this at him this year. But if it's successful on the town side, there is a Board of Ed component to it too, that would provide all of those same things. Again, given, you know, his acclamation to the role, the transition from one business manager to another, having to deal with the, the rolling punches on a daily basis that COVID brings. It, and, and really not knowing for ourselves what I would be potentially trying to sign him up for. This didn't seem like the right year to approach him with it, but if it's successful on our side, there's a component that they could use to offer that same transparency to, to the voters.
Jason?
Yeah.
So, just clarification purpose, because we're using all different lengths of time. So Amy, when you said this transfer, you said the $5,600 was a half a year. Jason, you said we have to sign on for two years.
We did.
I guess, okay, so my question to you is, this is half a year, so what is the whole two years gonna cost?
11, two plus a onboarding charge, I think $1,800.
So, so $5,600 each year?
$5,600 this year. 5, 5,600 this year, 11, two next year, plus the 1,800 setup charge.
We have budgeted the cost for next year in our IT budget.
Alright, so 18,000, somewhere around $18,600 for two years. Anybody else with any other questions?
So I was just gonna ask, is this a two-year idea that we're looking at, or are we thinking about going past two years with it? Because I would wonder, once you put everything in it, you're probably gonna wanna continue with it, so is there any sort of like long-term idea around this?
We could re-up the contract after the initial one, but the initial one was a two-year period. I'm hopeful that it's going to be successful and it's gonna be a, a popular addition to the transparency that we can provide to, to voters, so I'm hoping it'll be an expectation that is kept. But, you know, if we, if we get into it and decide that it's not providing what we hoped it would, or it's too staff-intensive to maintain, or, you know, whatever the reason, we can get out after two years.
Are we able to retain anything that we put in after those two years, so I guess who owns everything that goes in?
All the data is ours, all the data comes out of Munis. Amy did a data download for them, and they have been working on uploading it into their software system since just before Christmas. So it's, it's, it's in process, it's our data.
This is Bill, just a quick question. Programs like this, does it have a tracker on it to sell how many people from the town actually use it, or is it just, we don't have an idea who, who actually logs? Not who logs, but how many times it gets hit or used, or whatever?
Good question, we don't know the answer to that offhand, I don't know the answer to that offhand, but we can certainly ask that in our meeting tomorrow.
I mean, that would just be something to evaluate at the end of the contract you have, if it was used by, you know, just a handful, or, you know, minimal amount of time. May not be worth, but then going forward, if it's used a lot, then yeah, it would make sense to redo on from there, but I'm just curious if there is a way to track the, the use of it.
Well, I'll tell you, if it's, if it's not unique users, I'm a data nerd, so I'll be on this thing constantly. Single-handedly jack that thing up. But I think that Amy and I can certainly get some clarification on that. I would be, being a data nerd, that would be an interesting data set, see how widely it's used. I also think, and I think Noreen made mention of this earlier. So economic development is something that I, I am really focused on. And one of the things that is helpful when talking to companies from away is, is to be able to tell the story about what your community is about, what it values, where its priorities are. And this is putting that information right out there. So if there's a company that's looking to relocate from, you know, East Hartford, or, you know, East Carolina, there's an opportunity for them to, to see where we, we are putting our, our priorities and our values in a, in a forward-facing way.
Anybody else have questions?
This is a lot of salesmanship for a transfer. Yeah.
Well, if there are no more questions or concerns, if somebody would like to make a motion, that would be good.
This is Bill, I'll move, we approve transfer request number 12 for the amount of $5,600 from the contingency line to the IT software licensing line.
Alright, is there a second?
I'm T, I'll second that.
Alright, any more discussion? Alright, so all those in favor, I'm gonna go by your faces now because too many pages to scroll up. Tom T?
Yes.
Tom L?
Yes.
Bill Sign?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And Nicole?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes. Alright.
Thank you, folks. You're welcome.
Alright, and because I need to scroll through 80 pages, what, what's next on our agenda?
Just the reconciliation.
Alright, so where do we stand on reconciliations?
We are reconciled through December and everything but the general fund for the town. Our inter-funds are in balance for fiscal year '21. I forgot to look for 2021. I forgot to look for twenty-two. But we're getting there.
That's a good thing. All right, and I guess we'll go to Board of Education Updates and Referrals. And probably start with the audit, and I guess Amy, you and Patrick can touch on that. Are we getting anywhere, what are we doing, how are we doing, I'm gonna let you guys talk and update everybody with our situation.
Yeah, so I believe both Amy and I have spoken with Mike, Dan Ventor, at some point today. There's some outstanding items that need to be completed on the payroll side. So he did, I did speak with him, he did email me a list of things as far as needing to be resolved. Just based on it, and based on looking at it and just knowing where we are on the Board of Ed side. I am going to be utilizing an outside consultant, her name's Sherry D'Nello. She is a former business, school business manager for Southington for twenty-plus years, she's basically helped as far as providing some consultation to myself with providing recommendations on the reorganizing of our business office, and I'm going to be utilizing her for three days next week to attack these three items. I just spoke to Mike late this afternoon, so I haven't had the opportunity to connect with Amy on it, because certainly I want Sherry to connect with her and Mike to essentially move forward on this, so we can resolve the issues around the BOE. I mean, certainly, obviously, I think everyone's aware Amy's been tremendous help as far as assisting on the Board of Ed side, too, as far as getting this resolved.
So Tom T, you had questions, sorry, I pushed it off to here, so what was the question that you were?
I'm coming with a real, is, real, is, yeah, wow. Yeah, right, you know what I'm trying to say.
Realistic.
I mean, how are we coming with it, I mean, there's, is it close, or with the real, yeah, wow. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, I think what I'm trying to say is I mean, what have we found, what are we finding, what have we been able to solve, and are we hoping January thirty-first? Amy, what's your take?
So I, I would say, yes, we're hoping for January thirty-first. And so far, we've gotten all the funds but the general fund done, Mike, what he did for audit entries, I have booked. The payroll reclass that we talked about every single month last year that the people weren't in the right place has been done for fiscal twenty-one. The people have been fixed for going forward. So now we just have to do a reclass for fiscal twenty-two for the year, for the months between July and now. So we definitely are moving in the right direction. Several things have been adjusted, now we just have to find some problems, fix some problems, and do some reclasses. So my goal would be, before the end of next week, having clean financials, so then we can do that rest of that list that shows all the other things that have to happen. I think Mike's already doing some of the additional testing he needs to do. So he's working on some of the list. We're working on some of the list, Patrick has somebody working on trying to research some of the stuff, so we're getting there. How's that for accurate, Patrick?
Pretty accurate, I don't think I could've said it better, I mean, certainly on, on our end, I would expect to have more information by the end of day, next Wednesday, I mean, I mean, certainly Amy and I will both know, so, I mean, whether I, I send them an email or a report, I mean, certainly through email can report and update.
So I guess the question I have is as you're fixing these and being able to change people to where they belong and do all that, are we getting a different bottom line than where we ended the year, are we gonna is the Board of Ed either gonna have a large debit, a large credit, I mean, is it changing the bottom line, Amy?
Depending on what the issue is, probably yes. We're just not sure what the issues are right now, we have a couple ideas that we're working on, but without having certainty that that's the issue, we don't really have an answer to that question.
Okay, that's a very good answer.
As soon as we know, you guys will know.
All right, anybody else, or are we good on that section?
So just to clarify, so we, have we pretty much taken this over then from TMS? I know they were gonna help see it out, but are we just pretty much taking it over at this point?
So I'll tell you that they're still involved, I would classify their involvement as minimal and being phased out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right, so that's, that's the audit part, is there anything else, Patrick? Going on that you wanted to let us know about, anything good, fun?
I always have good and fun stuff for the schools. I mean, we're halfway through the school year. So, you know, with everything going on, still with COVID and the pandemic, obviously with us participating in on Zoom, I mean, one thing I think is very successful is, you know, we have been in person, our kids are in the buildings. I'm in the buildings on a weekly basis, and we have some good learning taking place right now. We're in the middle of our sports season, so we have high school track going on, high school, middle school basketball for boys and girls. Right now, our, our high school is taking midterms this week. And next week, we have our outstanding students for the quarters that have been nominated for all three of our schools, and at the Board of Ed, we'll also be doing our Horseman, Crystal Apple Quarterly Award Winners, which is our outstanding employee for each of the three schools on next Wednesday as well. So as far as the kid stuff, I feel like we always have good stuff in, in that realm, and certainly some things to celebrate.
I'll just kinda, as a parent, Patrick, I know there's been good feedback on your communication, and also your snow day call, people were bummed that they missed your dog.
Yeah, 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 she calls it a snowflake day.
All right, awesome. All right, and I lost my agenda, so where are we next?
Yeah, sorry, I, just because you brought it up, Nicole, I will tell you, I'll be working with the principals next year, and through our advisory period, periods, my goal is to have the kids develop videos for the snow calls for next school year. So, and have them be a contest, so people won't have to hear my voice at five AM.
All right, so Geraldine, the next item is new business, which we don't have any.
I popped it back up again. All right. So oh my goodness. New business, we have nothing, right?
Right, that's what Amy said.
Yep, and unfinished business, we have, I think. So we're really on to Board Member Comments, so I will go around quickly if anybody has any, Nicole?
I'll just say, you know, thank you to Jason and Patrick both, I think they've seen comments recently on Facebook about the transparency from both the town side and the school side, so thank you both, and I hope everybody had a happy new year.
All right, George?
None, but it was nice seeing everyone, and thank you both to Jason and Patrick.
All right, Tom Lanzner?
Yeah, I echo Nicole, and I also wanted to wish her a happy birthday. Somebody was supposed to make a cake today, I don't, I don't remember who that was.
I know. Anyways, right? And Bill?
Good, I have nothing to add.
All right, cool, Tom Talamini?
I have nothing to add, except I hope this budget season, we can be somewhat in person.
We'll be out on a picnic table, because I'm not doing budget again on Zoom, that is not happening.
That sounds good to me.
We can meet in a garage.
Yeah, there you go, we'll pop a tent, get some picnic tables, it will not be Zoom. All right, upcoming meeting will be February sixteenth, which will probably be soon, but hopefully that will be our last one. So, let's have a motion to adjourn.
This is Bill, I'll move you adjourn.
Second?
Nicole.
All right, all those in favor, Nicole?
I, yes.
George?
Hi.
Tom L?
Hi.
Bill?
Yes.
Tom T?
Yes.
All right, we are all good, have a wonderful month.
Bye, buddy.
Bye.
I will goodnight.
Thank you.